Everybody ready? Good evening, everyone. Call to order. Meeting of Johnson County Council, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Roll call, please. Here.
President.
Here.
Ron Deere.
Here.
Linda Grisomer.
Linda Grisomer.
Here.
John Myers.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Dear, we give him the invocation.
Bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the the energy that you bring to this county and the willingness for those who are in elected positions and the workers throughout the county. Employed by the county who worked to to make this the number one county in our community. We pray for those people in Hawaii who are so devastated by those fires there and that they can bring more help to the people as they go forward. In Jesus' name we pray.
Favor, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we have a couple of changes for tonight's agenda. And I'll ask for approval, but we're adding item B fourteen. Which is the extension office ladder. And also, item C four will be taken with item E two, but we'll we'll execute item E two first. So take a motion. I'll move to approve with the changes. Approved by John Myers. Second. Second by John Deitner's. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
The roll call vote is no one is.
Oh, for the agenda, okay. Approved, yes.
Yes.
Ron Deere.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes.
Linda Grisomer.
Yes.
John Myers.
Yes.
John Deitner.
Yes. Carries, alright. Alright, at this time I will be accepting public comments. Anybody has a public comment, if you please step to the podium. Limit your time to five minutes. Seeing none, I'll move ahead. The next motion will be seeking for the routine matters on the consent agenda. And remember, we're taking, we're adding item B fourteen, which is the Purdue extension office.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved to approve by Ron Deere, second by John Myers. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Aye.
Ron Deere.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes.
Linda Grisomer.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. The first item business under item C be the salary ordinance amendments, additional appropriations, reductions, and transfers. And the first one is Circuit Court. Number one oh oh one dash oh one three one.
Hi, Gina Johnson Court Administrator. This is just to clean up something. The employee that serves as our bailiff in Circuit Court wasn't in the correct line item, so I'm putting her in the correct line item and making the salary adjustment just so she makes exactly as much as she made yesterday. No, no request for any changes there.
Gina, that's retroactive back to the last pay period. Is that what I understood?
Yeah, because I had to do the calculation, make it even.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions or discussion? Move to approve. Moved to approve by John Deitner, second by John Myers. Roll call, please.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
Ron Deere.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
Linda Grisomer.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
John Deitner.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
Next item is item C two, Superior Court Number Two, Public Defender's Contracts. The music?
Get it out.
Can we try to get?
Do you like to try to get out?
Hello, Your Honor.
Judge Peter Nugent Johnson, Superior Two, as I've discussed with each of you individually, here to request some additional money for public defender services. We did submit a letter to each member of the council, and I think we've discussed it with regards to our need, particularly in court two. I think we all have it. As you all know, last week, I believe we did another roundup, and my court picked up an additional eleven high fat cases. Statistically speaking, nine or ten will ask for public defense, though the timing in my, at least in this particular situation, was perfect to show you the need for additional public defense. I don't like asking for it, but we have to. And I'm willing to, you know, be glad to answer any questions that we haven't discussed already.
I I spoke with you, as I'm sure the others have, and am in support of your need, but a bunch of time, I'm assuming this will be, this will be another full line item, correct?
Will be.
Okay, just wanted to bring that out.
Yes, I appreciate that, yes.
I'll make a motion. If we're done with discussion, I'll make a motion to approve item C two, Superior Court two.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
Ron Deere.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Aye.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
John Deitner.
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Next item is item three, cum cap development.
Good evening.
Are we taking you, are we taking all yours together, or we?
I'd be great with that, but I'm happy to discuss them separately as well.
You can take them, you can take them all.
Well, C four is that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, E two.
Let's do, let's do a C three first.
Okay. Luke Maston, Highway Supervisor. Yes, the first additional appropriation request is hundred thousand dollars in emergency disaster spending. This amount would cover the service offered by the county and the areas affected by the June twenty-fifth tornado to assist with limb pickup. We had three tree contractors that assisted us with that, and this appropriation amount will cover the invoice amounts for that work.
Okay. Open discussion? Is everything all cleaned up now?
Yes. Other than we had some conversation about waterways in the commissioner's meeting today. There are some locations that still have fallen trees or trees that that are blocking waterways. We are pursuing a separate investigation with the NRCS. There are some USDA programs that could potentially assist us if any of those blockages run the risk of affecting our public infrastructure, bridges or culverts. So, yes, yard cleanup or property cleanup is pretty much done, excluding some pretty large trees in some of the waterways that may end up causing some issues later, but we're working on that.
I don't have a question about the need. I have a question for the attorney or the auditor. Is there any county cum clap cap development plan?
Are you asking us the statutory permitted use of cumulative development funds?
No, is there a a plan? Cum cap development plan? For how the money is in cum cap or to be spent?
Uh, there might be. I I know, under a statute, you're allowed to use it under emergency disaster spending, so that's why.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying I I haven't seen a cum cap development plan for I thought there was something that had, maybe I'm thinking of something else where there had to be filed in the last year or so of.
We did a capital development plan when we did the edit tax. Is that what you're thinking of?
Maybe that's what, yeah.
Yeah, we did that back in October last year, but that was more for kind of your high priority growth projects is what that was for.
Yeah, that that was the economic development income tax.
Well, yeah.
And it it requires in order for a local agency to to receive their portion of that revenue, they have to adopt a capital improvement plan, which we did, but that's separate from the the yeah, you know, capital development fund.
Well, I remember there was a capital development plan. That's why, sort of why is that, if there was a cum cap plan, or if there had to be, or if it's just general, for all general type authorized expenditures.
It's not my fund, but I'm I'm not familiar with there being any sort of requirement to have a plan for how that's spent. Yeah.
And it's a rate-driven fund.
Yes.
Right.
And and it's got a good healthy cash balance. This is as Mike Reuter reported to us back in June, so I recommend that we go ahead with it.
So look back to this request, though. This is invoices to date, right? Nothing projected, or just?
This will cover the entirety of the contracted work.
Thanks.
And the reason it's a, it's a good strong cash balance is because of that large AV increase.
Any further discussion, question? Right, entertain a motion for item C three.
Move to approve, C three.
Motion by Ron Deere, second by John Myers. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Ron Deere.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Aye.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
John Deitner.
Aye. Alright, motion carries. Thank you. Next item is item C four, but first what we'll do is do item E two. Right? Works for me. For you?
Yes.
Okay, so item E two is approval of interlocal agreement between Johnson County, Indiana, and City of Franklin, Indiana, for provision of funding for the Graham Hand Roundabout.
So this project is a needed one and one that City of Franklin is choosing and offering to pursue and manage. That would be an intersection improvement project at Graham Road and Paul Hand Road, which is four hundred north for us county people. The proposed project would be a roundabout that would accommodate truck traffic, which is needed there. This project would be done as a partnership between the City of Franklin, Johnson County, and the town of Whiteland would be involved as well, since we all have interest in that location and or some of those roads are under our jurisdictions.
We'll maintain after the completion of it, who maintains it?
Believe that is called out in the agreement for the city of Franklin to maintain it. Now, realistically, from a, from a snowplowing perspective, we will probably all make trips through the roundabout, since we have different legs of that intersection, but longer term maintenance, I'm pretty sure falls under the City of Franklin. And they would, I think, as I mentioned, they would handle project management. We will have input and opportunities to provide input and review of plans at stages, but ultimately, the city will will manage that project to completion.
Anybody have anything else?
Excuse me, I think Amy sent something out. This is, someone did. This is not to exceed six seventy-five, correct?
Correct. The, there is a potential for further discussions, just depending on how the the cost estimates come back, but under this agreement that we're adopting here, it would not exceed that that dollar amount. There would have to be a separate agreement or an amendment to this agreement if it were to exceed and we were comfortable with participating.
Further discussion, questions? Ready for a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Yes.
Jonathan Myers.
Aye.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
John Deitner.
Aye. Further discussion? Motion carries. Alright, so moving back to item C four, local road and street, and this is for the appropriation for that work, Graham Paul Hand intersection. So you wanted to address the money?
Sure. The appropriation request is based off the dollar amount in the, you know, local agreement, which is six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Under the agreement, we would provide that dollar amount to the city by November first of this year, which is the reason for this appropriation request. And then, at the end of the project, there will be a final accounting to determine if any money is due back to the county, if we're fortunate enough that the costs come in lower than anticipated.
So again, I'll say that the the LRS receives monthly revenue from the state.
Correct.
And we have a good cash value in your, that was reported as two point four million in June. So the funds are.
Move to approve. Seems to me if we do the agreement, we ought to do the deal.
Yes, we can get Frank on the paper. Motion approved by John. Second. Second by John Myers. Roll call, please.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
Ron Deere.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Aye.
Linda Grisomer.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
John Deitner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is item C five, County Highway. Up again.
Last one. This is an additional appropriation request in our vehicle repair and maintenance line item in Fund eleven seventy-six, the MVH Fund. This line item covers costs for sending trucks and equipment out to outside shops for repair. The two hundred series line item vehicle maintenance supplies is where we pay for parts and other things that we, where we do that work in-house. But given increased costs for shop costs and sending stuff out, combined somewhat with the the age of the fleet, we have expended or come pretty close to expending the dollar amount that we had originally budgeted, that I had budgeted for this year. This is somewhat of a unpredictable line item. We have had years where we have not had issues that caused us to appropriate more money, but obviously, it's just dependent on what breaks down and when, and whether it's a repair that we can do ourselves or is more involved.
So once again, this fund receives monthly revenue from the state and has a good cash balance right now. It's at three point seven million, as reported in June. Any discussion, questions? Entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item C four, I'm sorry, C five, vehicle repair and maintenance of sixty thousand dollars.
Motion by Pamela Burton. Second by John Myers. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Ron Deere.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes.
Linda Grisomer.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
John Deitner.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next up is statewide nine one one, Fund Number one two two two.
Heath Branton, nine one one director. Hi, Heath. Lou. Let's just request for additional appropriations into our overtime budget. I've already moved fifty-three thousand dollars from other line items, so I'm pretty tapped out. I don't have anywhere else that I can move those funds from.
So I'll chime in here once again. Mike Reuter gave us some instruction on this in June, and he while saying the cash balance is okay and it's okay for this, but he's suggesting that at some point in time, we move some expenses to the general fund from this, because it's it's going down pretty quick. Because your current expenditures are outweighing the revenues, and I don't, I don't want to, you know, make that seem like it's a negative thing. It's just the way that it's.
Yeah, and the states made it very clear that they will not be seeking an increase to the nine one one funds anytime soon, so. Yeah.
Has it increased?
Not as long as I've been around now.
I don't remember.
Yeah, the the nine one one director around the state are pushing for it. But, you know, we get those additional distributions and ninety-ten distributions towards the end of every year that has been kind of keeping us in balance, but the state even announced just really this year that they're they're taking on more financial responsibilities for some of the services that are being provided throughout the state, so I would imagine that I, that we'll still get some kind of distribution toward the end of the year, but I I foresee that being a lesser amount than yours prior.
So I think it's council's responsibility that we need to determine how how we're going to do this in the future, and maybe you can get with your liaison figure this out, maybe as to which things would be better to transfer to the general fund, or if you even have another option that I don't know of.
We, I don't know if it can come from the editor or not.
Alright.
What caused the overtime? You had fifty-three thousand you took out, you got available, plus this eighty-five, so you're a hundred and thirty-five, hundred and forty thousand in overtime?
Yes. Yeah, we we've been short-staffed all year, and it just, with the amount of time it takes to train a dispatcher, we're eight months to to train a new hire dispatcher, so we've been, we've got four that we're about ready to release from training, so that's going to help us, but it's just the amount of time it takes to train, train a dispatcher to.
What do you call fully staffed versus where you are now?
We have three positions we still have to fill. We have, we have, and we have six in training, so five nine holes in the schedule right now, but, I mean, only three away from being what was it, fully staffed, but inevitably, when you're in the training process, you you lose one, and you kind of have to start over, so.
How long does it take?
Part of the challenge for overtime for being short-staffed, as we all are probably aware of, is the challenge of meeting salaries that are adequate to retain the dispatchers, because they can, in some cases, very easily move to other places or receive substantial especially when they're skilled and have been on the job.
Ken Malinda had a comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, how long does it take to train somebody from start to being done?
Roughly eight months.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, there, we're, we're, the average is six months to eighteen months, and those counties around us, that the training program is a year long, so ours is, is well, well within that range.
So the auditor's office right now, I think in part of their analysis of salaries and positions, they're looking at how quick these, some of these positions turn over. Could you aid them in that? Putting that together, because that may be helpful.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Questions? Anything from you?
Yeah, I I'm confident that this will, this will get us through the end of, end of the year, especially with the the four that we got, getting ready to be released from training. We just hired another one from another county, which we're pretty confident she'll get up and trained pretty quickly, so we'll be able to fill five of those openings very shortly.
What was your budget for this year?
Budget open was ninety thousand, I believe.
Ninety?
Yeah. Full tornadoes. That adds a lot.
Alright, any further discussion? Entertain a motion if not.
Big motion to approve three, C six, statewide nine eleven, overtime eighty-five thousand, though.
Motion by Ron Deere.
Second.
Second by John Myers. Roll call, please.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
Ron Deere.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes.
Linda Grisomer.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
John Deitner.
Aye. Carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've been waiting for this one all day.
Elizabeth Alvey, Johnson County Auditor, and I'm here to ask for additional appropriation for profi- professional services of thirty-eight thousand.
Any questions?
I'm assuming this is the line that we discussed prior to Baker Tilly. Yes, Baker Tilly for the audit.
Yes.
For the.
That's correct.
So talk to me a little bit about the not to exceed hundred and ten thousand.
That is in the contract with Baker and Tilly, that it should not exceed a hundred and ten thousand.
Okay.
You mean services for the year?
Yes. So we should be fine.
Further discussion? Anybody have a question? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item C seven under the auditor for thirty-eight thousand dollars for professional services.
Second. Motion by Pamela Burton, second by John Myers. Roll call, please.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
Ron Deere.
Aye.
Jonathan Myers.
Yes.
Linda Grisomer.
Aye.
John Myers.
Aye.
John Deitner.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, the next item up is item B one, Approval of Ordinance, twenty twenty-three dash oh four, and this is an ordinance regarding an additional appropriation by Needham Fire Protection District.
Thank you all. Jeff Peters, Financial Advisor to the Needham Fire Protection District, and we've got representatives here to answer your questions on what they're going to make these expenditures on. What I did want to talk to you about ahead of time is, this is more than just an additional appropriation. It is a look forward at increasing operational costs. The additional appropriation before you is to expand those costs during two thousand twenty-three in hope of pursuing the excess levy for population growth, which is the same appeal that's been granted for the fire districts at Nunavah, Hensley, Bargerville, and White River. If they were to pursue that, they wouldn't be approved until two thousand twenty-four. It wouldn't hit the levy until two thousand twenty-five. Income tax increases off of that wouldn't appear till two thousand twenty-six. I did want to tell you that they have sufficient cash. I did want to tell you that they have sufficient cash funds in reserve at this point at about two million dollars. So if you are to approve it, they do have their own cash flow to support it until those revenues would kick in. Tax impact wise, at this point in time, we believe they qualify for the maximum, which is approximately fifteen cents. By next spring, we may have new census numbers so that amount may be recalculated, but our hope is still that they would be around that amount currently that are, they're about fourteen and a half cents. So it would be looking at potentially doubling their tax rate. To kind of give that some comparison to the other taxing districts or the other fire protection districts. White River is a little bit above forty one, Amity is a little bit above eleven cents, Nineveh is at about fourteen cents. Hensley at about seventeen cents, Bargersville at about forty five cents, so it would kind of put them in the middle of the pack. And I'd be happy to answer any financial questions. Again, if you approve this, we'll be back in the spring to talk about the, the tax impact, the rate, et cetera, and the budget that would come before you if you approve this tonight. The budget you'll see for twenty twenty four will be consuming cash as well, but they do have that cash in reserve to make this step up in operations and chief, et cetera, can answer all your questions on expenditures.
Good evening, Jason Cahill, Needham Fire Chief. So, excuse me, essentially the funds that we're requesting this evening breaks down into three different categories, and if you'll let me, I'll just read them out to you and then I'll take your questions. So we're going to use two hundred and ninety five thou- or I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty nine thousand of the three hundred and ninety five requested for payroll for staffing for the rest of the year. We would like to staff one of our two fire stations with three folks for twenty four hours. Currently, our model is that we staff two folks at just twelve hours and then we rely on the home response after six P M. So we would like to request two hundred and fifty nine thousand for staffing. We've also increased staffing, so we need to purchase some additional turnout gear. So sixty thousand of the three ninety five requested would go to fifteen sets of gear for new hires. With total forty five thousand, then we have to replace around five sets of gear that we currently have. They're going to be set to expire in accordance with national standards that expire at ten years. So we have about five sets that we need to replace. And lastly is seventy five thousand dollars that we need to outfit mostly Station Two. Station One on three fifty north is pretty well set up for twenty four hour staffing. Station Two needs to have a bunk room built out, it does have a big wide open room, but there's no HVAC over there. The kitchen's over there, there's no HVAC over there, the locker room's over there, there's no HVAC over there. So that would be that last part of that three ninety five request would be the seventy five thousand to outfit essentially Station Two, along with a little bit of Station One that we have to have just a little bit of HVAC added there as well. So those are the three top items that we would be utilizing this additional appropriation for. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because I, I'm, I don't know, so I'm going to ask. This is the need for the additional staffing, has it always been there, is this, they're a new mandate? Is there something bigger than it used to be, is, can you, can you elaborate on that a bit?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of an oddball, they hired me from the outside and I started in January. And when I started in January, I, I had the ability to just kind of take a big step back and do a huge objective analysis of everything. So I've got pages and pages of data over the last five years of response times and costs and payroll that they've put into that and it's a linear regression model, it's not getting any better. And so, again, having that advantage of having the objective look at everything, I stepped back with my command staff and said, we got to change something, we're spending more money, our response times are getting worse, what's going on? So the current model that was in place when I took over and is still in place today, it's not working. Year after year, we're spending more money on staffing, but we're still only staffing for twelve hours and we're relying on that home response at night. And to be totally honest with you, up until April, we were still missing responses because we didn't have the personnel to respond to emergencies. So we had to rely on City of Greenwood and others around the city of Franklin to make our calls that we're responsible for. And that did not sit well with me personally, being hired as the chief. And so I really dug in deep, spoke with Trafalgar's chief, spoke with many of the chiefs that went through the process that Mr. Peters was describing earlier and said, you know, how did you guys fix it? And, you know, got a lot of different opinions from a lot of different fire chiefs around the county. And again, met with my command staff and said, let's, let's make a plan for us that works for us. And we coordinated with our district board and said, look, we have a, an issue, we have a response. We're the second largest district in the county, that's a problem, number one, and we're only staffed twelve hours a day. So the first thing we came up with was staffing, number one, we need to get people there twenty four hours a day, seven days a week, during sixty five days a year. Because the home response is just, it, it doesn't work in our district because, again, we are the second largest. We cover about fifty five square miles all the way from Greensburg Road all the way up to the county line at Marion County. Responding from home to get a truck and then get out the door and then if you're in, you know, eighty one's districts, the call never fails, the calls in eighty two's districts. So time was a big issue and, and like I said, the, the data that was trending was not going in the right direction. And so, you know, while I understand, you know, we want to take money out of our reserves to fix it now. We made that deal with our district board and said, look, let's get an appropriation now to prove that, hey, we can make this work. And if we make it work through the end of the year, next year, we can look at this tax increase because that's not something that I take lightly, that's not something that anybody on my team takes lightly. So we came to the agreement that if, if we can get an appropriation, prove our performance this year, hey, we can fix the issue, look at it at the end of the year and say this works, then we take off and go after the tax increase like Hensley and Nineveh, Bargersville and White River did as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I get a little windy sometimes.
No, 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 thank you, that's excellent information, thank you.
Can you answer again about the number of positions that you're talking about and how the shifts are going to look?
Yes, sir, so we just would operate much like any other department in the county. We're going to work three positions at twenty four hours. So essentially what we're going to do is split six per day, we'll do six in the first, or three in the first half, three in the back half, six positions per day and, and that's one, another part of that blitz that we kind of did when we recognized our problem. We really made it a point to get out and recruit, you know, that was my number one priority aside from, from response times was bringing people in.
So are you filling all six or you're wanting, how many, how many are filled? How many do you have planned to have filled already and then what are you looking for?
Yes, sir, so we've staffed up thirty four percent since basically April. When I came in, we had twenty five members, we're sitting at, I believe, thirty eight, I think, is the number. So I think we can implement this now, I'm confident, I know my deputy chiefs are confident that if we get this appropriation, start tomorrow, we're going to put, you know, things in motion to, to cover that district twenty four hours a day. So.
Are these of a career or?
No, sir, I should have stipulated, I'm sorry, I should have specified that. These will just be paid standby positions, I'm not asking to put guys into seventy seven pension fund, nothing like that. We just are going to pay, paid standby positions in accordance with the state statutes with the number of hours that they can work.
So I have a question for Mr. Peters. We're going to be doing non-binding stuff here in a little bit tonight, how does this affect that?
It won't affect it at all because what they're going to look at as the tax increase won't hit till twenty five, so it'll be a year from now.
Okay, thank you.
So to kind of, to add to that just a little bit, you know, we're, we're taking from our cash reserves for this appropriation. What we'll accumulate in our fund will also help fund us next year as well and then we start collecting. If, if we choose to go down the taxation road, we start collecting in twenty five, we'll still maintain well over, we anticipate well over a million dollars in that cum fund, so we shouldn't really deplete funds really all too bad either.
Jason, I got a question I had, and that is, it sounds like you're kind of test driving this a little bit to see if your model proves out. Is that a fair way to put that?
Yes, sir, because we don't want to raise taxes if we can't perform and that was our district board's, you know, stipulation.
Okay, so then you adjust on the fly as to the amount and that sort of thing, and either raise taxes or not.
Yes, sir.
Success or not.
Yes, sir, and, and on this, you know, we're not thinking about next year, we're not thinking about the following year. We're thinking about three to five years down the road when, you know, Clark Township continues to blossom with, with, with houses and, and it's just going to make us busier, so eventually we'll have to get to the point where we'll probably have staffed two stations. We're not there today, but I anticipate in three to five years that we will be there. Based on, you know, again, I went back five years and pulled data for five years and all models indicate up, right? Like everything else that grows and we're right there by the Marion County line, it's a, it's a pretty hotspot for, for, for construction and building. So we're thinking down the road on this. Yes.
Any further questions, further discussions? From you.
Anybody else have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, that's all I have.
So this is approval of ordinance twenty twenty three dash oh four, item D one. Entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve D one ordinance regarding additional appropriation by Needham Fire District of three hundred and ninety five thousand.
Motion by Mr. Gear.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mahler. Roll call, please.
Hi.
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 Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Next item is item D two, discussion regarding the debt levy request for Amity Fire Protection District twenty twenty four budget.
Pete Brant, Amity Fire Protection. We have a fire truck that is in disrepair, it is damaged, it's cracked, it's our tanker truck. It's been cracked, it's been patched, concern is that any slight jarring of, of that, even going over railroad tracks, completely cracked the inside liner of the tanker. You know, the fact that Amity has one fire hydrant in its entire district and it's on the very northern edge, water is imperative for us to have, so that this truck were to go out of service, it would, could cause some serious problems with getting water to a fire. So that's why we're asking permission for a debt levy in order to purchase a new truck. Right now, we know that there are at least three trucks that are in production right now and we could have by April of twenty twenty four. If we lose those trucks, then we are looking at a build out process of anywhere from two, three years for a truck. We know that the current one will not make it that long, so that's why we're here now to, to request this to, we've got an RFP ready to go to send out to, we've, we've spec'd out what we, what it is we're looking for, we're looking for a pumper tanker truck. That's not just water, it has, does have anywhere from twenty five hundred to three thousand gallons of water, but it can also pump, doesn't have to be hooked to an engine to pump the water. So would allow us, it would actually, you know, give us another method of, of getting water on a fire and with a single apparatus as opposed to, to.
So how old is the current truck?
The, what, what year is the current truck?
Nineteen ninety nine.
It's nineteen ninety nine.
Did you guys buy that there or?
Yes. We were. So it is, yes.
I have a question for the attorney. This request is to include a debt levy in the twenty twenty four budget. So we're, what is our action tonight, I guess, is what I'm asking.
I think you're wanting reassurance so you can purchase the truck, right?
Yeah, we just, we want to be able to put out the RFP and, you know, seek the financing.
How long does it take to get the truck?
We could have one by April.
Of next year.
Of next year, yes, they're, they're in product, there are three that we know of that are in production right now.
Are those price fixed, the, the price is not going to go up during production? That price is the price.
I mean, it, I can imagine it would go up during production. I mean, once we've sent out the, the bid and we, we'll bid it out and once we've received the, the bids and award the, the winning bid, then.
I just, I've run into that issue before on, when I was on the White River Township Board, so.
Yeah, I know that with new builds, I know White River and Bargersville both ran into them saying basically, hey, we're going to put you to the back of line unless you pay another twenty thousand.
Right.
I, I know they've, they've run into that, hopefully with these already being in production and near, nearing completion, we can avoid those issues.
Okay.
So your answer?
Well, I mean, it, and if they're doing any kind of tack, I mean, we can require a public hearing for any of those types of changes, so if it's really just a matter of getting consensus from the council that they're behind this.
So, and I am not objecting to it, I just want to understand the procedure that request is to include a debt levy in the twenty twenty four budget, so approving this, that means it's, is it a discussion or are we taking action?
I think it's just a discussion at this particular meeting and any tax change that occurred at a later meeting.
Okay.
So how much is the debt going to be? You said you've got some cash.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're sticking up to five hundred and forty thousand dollars for the truck and equipment. We're willing to put in a hundred percent of our rainy day fund, which is just over a hundred and ten thousand dollars and then ten thousand dollars a year out of our cumulative fire fund towards the, the payment.
What's the price of the truck?
We haven't, I mean, we're, we'll, we'll know for sure when we get the, the bid, the bids in, we're, we're looking at somewhere in that four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollar range for the truck.
Have you, does it? And again, I'm just asking because I don't know, is it automatic that you get, that you build a brand new one? Or is it ever a situation where you look around for something slightly or gently used? And has, is this even an option?
I, and I have to leave that up to, to the chief, but I don't know that you're going to find a truck that would be gently used like that, to be honest with you. I mean, when people are getting rid of them, they're getting rid of them for a reason. I don't necessarily want the district to take on.
So no other departments have ever done that, then it's not something that you would do?
I mean, I, I can, we leave, you know, these guys could probably speak to it a little bit more than I could, but I don't, you know, see a lot of people buying used fire.
Fire truck right now is holding on to it.
Gotcha.
Because it's two years out for you to get a new one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so how is this increase going to affect everybody else?
From what I'm, I'm told that the, the, this should be separate from any other tax levy that we have, so it shouldn't have any effect on, on the other levies.
So I'm, I'm just quizzed as to how we are to do the formality of including a debt levy in the district's twenty twenty four budget, how do, how do we act on that tonight, Adam? Because I'm not opposed to it either, but.
Like you can't act on it tonight.
Are you looking for some action tonight?
Um, I, I guess, I don't know what, what you're able to do, just, we, we need to act on, we, we don't want to lose any of the trucks that we know are in production because like I said, if we, if we miss out on those trucks, we, we're looking at a two, two-year build out on a new truck and we know that the truck isn't going to last that long. We'd like to send out the RFP, you know, get bids, you know, bid, bid this process out, get bids on the truck. And in work on the, the financing side of things to get, get the money to pay for this.
I guess I'm confused at what action we could take at this point.
Well, that's what I'm looking for from legal is what would the motion say?
I don't know what we can do.
Yeah, well, I, I was only writing this as a discussion, the groundwork for future action by the council. So I don't think there's anything the council tonight can do when it comes to any kind of adjustments to levies at this meeting tonight.
Just a goodwill statement saying that we would, were.
In favor, support. That's what, that's what we can do tonight, but we can't do any.
Yeah, invite, invite consensus. We're in support of this.
So I mean, it would be just, you know, an overall consensus of going ahead and putting out the RP, get, get final numbers on what it actually is. We're looking at spending and so if I'm understanding correctly.
Yeah, there has to be advertisement in the paper.
Right.
There has to be public hearings, there's two readings.
Yes.
With two readings that has to go through.
Sure.
So, so that what you really need to hear is if there is, and on the flip side of it, you need to hear if there is a, a problem with you going forward. And if anybody's got that statement, we, we need to make it tonight that we've got a problem with you going forward. I'm, I'm supportive of it.
I'm supportive of it. And we talked about Indiana Bond Bank. Have you, had you approached them or?
No, yeah, I was actually speaking to him about that earlier tonight. So we'll, and that's something I just talked to the chief about that we'll be looking at, at them as an option.
I think that'd be a good option for you. Just, you know, the discussion we had with.
I'm supportive in theory, but I honestly feel like I need a whole lot more information to say it would be one hundred percent. So and I know you don't have that now.
Yeah, and he said, if we can just get a, you know, a blessing to, to move forward and, and gather this information and advertise and that way we can get you some, some solid numbers for future action.
More information.
Or with more information, I would say move forward with additional information to get my full support, but yeah.
Okay. Yep. So we needed, thank you.
All right. So now we're into E one, holding new business board appointment to the Johnson County Park Board. We have three applicants on our table and then would legal like to discuss any of this. Ask if anyone is here to come forward.
Yeah, there was one that you did.
Okay, who do we have on Zoom, please?
Me, Melina.
Got you, girl.
I am, or sorry. Mike Weaver.
Mike Weaver, okay. Mike, would you like to speak?
I'm not sure what you're actually at. Bella said, could I attend?
So Mike, we have your, your interest form in front of us here. And, and we have your letter on the back.
All right.
So we understand a bit, but just wanted to give you the opportunity to speak to us if you wanted to. If not, that's okay too.
Okay. Well, I, I try, I actually applied once before. I think I'd be really good at being on board. I was on a board for the National Wild Turkey Federation. I've been with agreement about twenty years now. I really enjoy, we've got a nature center that I've been building for five to six years that I've been working with, Soylent Water, Purdue Extension Office. Everybody has been helping with me, try to get classes taught, things we do there. I'm actually the curator of the building and also the kind of the guy who coordinates our activities and stuff at the nature center as well. Done a lot of work at the, at the Johnson County Parks as well. And I used to live out in front of the one there on Morgantown Road at Independence before I moved back into the Greenwood area. So I know some of the people on the board already, and I think I'd be a good fit and just was hoping that you guys would take me into consideration.
Yes, thank you, Mike. It's a good program. Do we have anybody else online?
Hi, this is Todd Townsend.
Let's go ahead, Mr. Townsend.
Hi, uh, yeah, just, you probably have my application there, but just a brief bio on me. I, I served in the Army for thirty-six years, uh, lived in Greenwood for, uh, over twenty-five years, uh, retired. My last assignment was as the Vice Chief of Staff for General Humber. And, uh, one of my previous assignments was as a commander at Camp Atterbury. I'd pre, I previously served on the Greenwood Fire Department Merit, Merit Board. And I currently serve on the, uh, the Governor's State Armory Board. But just interested in what the park system does there and be happy to serve if you're interested.
Thank you. Anything else? So do we have any questions for the candidates or any, any questions from the candidates? Okay, so entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. Rux does not.
He was told, right?
Yeah, yes.
I'll make a motion if you'd like, sir. Um, I understand one, we had four applicants, one of them, one or two of them had to be pulled because they have lucrative positions. So of what's remaining, they're both, in my opinion, excellent candidates. I think one would serve just as well as the other. However, Mr. Weaver seems to have a, a lot more hands-on experience with parks and has been a naturalist and has volunteered substantially in the past. So I would make a recommendation that, uh, Mr. Weaver be appointed to the Johnson County Park Board.
I have a motion by Pam Burton and a second by John Myers for Mr. Weaver. Any further discussion? Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
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 Motion carries for Mr. Weaver. I'd like to thank both candidates. Both of you have excellent credentials. And please keep trying if you're weren't successful, but congratulations, Mr. Weaver.
Thank you.
Okay. So we did the item two, correct?
Yes.
Your locals, we're good to go there. All right, next discussion is for the approval of the Personnel Committee. This is something that we just have discussed on numerous occasions. And I'd sent out some information to all the counselors and would like to open up for discussions or.
Well, I, we've had the discussion and I'd like to make a motion with some modifications to establish an ad hoc personnel advisory committee with the change in the recommendations by the president, that the three council members, members be appointed by the president of the council and the chairman be appointed by the president of the council.
All right, I have a motion to approve by Mr. Dear. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mullers.
What was your motion?
Uh, to establish the ad hoc committee and to, that the chairman, uh, excuse me, the president appoint the three council members and, uh, president appoint the chairman.
Has the purpose been, can someone just quickly, quick note version of the purpose of the committee and what the end game of the committee's intent is? I know we've read it, but it's also been somewhat of a winding road. Not elaborate, but. So is there something there that's written that says what the purpose of it is?
Well, as written by you, John, the purpose of the committee is to advise the Johnson County Council on recommendations regarding Johnson County Personnel. And that's not talking about hiring and firing of personnel. But I think what's not included in, in there is that that, as I understand what you said, John, is that we'd be looking at the possibility of revising the personnel classifications. I know, John, you were here, you know, years when they did, both of you were here when the years when they did the committee before. And, and I know personally, what I've heard is that, uh, there was some lack of of interaction, for lack of a better word, with department heads, elected officials on some of those definitions. And then also looking at whatever the committee suggests needs to be looked at as far as administration. I don't know that, I mean.
Yeah, it's an ad hoc committee. I want to make some statements here that it's only in place for six months. If it, if it's any longer than that, it becomes a standing committee. Uh, I think the end game, John, is for us to improve, uh, conditions for personnel in Johnson County and have them represented by, uh, this committee. The committee is going to be then making recommendations to the council who, who would then act. And we've this is as a result of me and John Muller's attending a, a state called meeting, you know, uh, from the State Board of Accounts. And in that meeting, they had a really good, uh, presentation. And I think that was the, uh, Hamilton County Head of Supervisors and, uh, Board of Commissioners, I think. And then they also had three people from HR departments around the, the state. But these recommendations seem to be the way to go. And it seemed to be the, the, the way that they're wanting to, us to go in county government to represent, uh, our employees.
Thank you. I know I was supportive of it, I just didn't know why.
If I have any other questions, I have a motion by Mr. Dear, a second by John Muller's. Any further discussion? Now I'll call for a vote. Roll call, please.
I guess, is there anybody else, what's to be on the committee?
Well, we need to vote for the committee first. Is there anybody that wants to be on the committee?
Are you going to vote first?
I think we need to vote to establish the committee.
It's once we vote that you have the authority to appoint, correct?
Correct, but there's still discussion. I want to cut him off. You're asking a question.
I'm asking a question, I mean.
We'll find out after the we saw the committee. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
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 So given that, I have that ability. So I'm going to ask, and I'd like to hear an affirmation. I'm going to ask John Muller's, Ron Dear and John Getmers. Do I hear, uh, yes or no?
Oh, we certainly, I would be honored.
Okay.
Likewise.
Absolutely. Okay. Mr. Dear, would you service him?
I most certainly would.
All right. Let's move on to the next. You're going to be up on this one, aren't you?
Um, I can certainly give it a shot if you'd like.
Do you think you could give us a brief understanding of what we're doing?
Okay, um, well, this is item number
E four.
E four on the agenda. And it's where the county council has reviewed, uh, the estimated property tax levy limits and the estimated reductions due to the circuit breakers for each individual taxing unit for twenty twenty-four. So we have received and reviewed the estimated property tax levy limits and the estimated reductions due to the circuit breakers for each of the following taxing units. And I'm going to read each of these. Blue River Township, Clark Township, Franklin Township, Hensley Township, Needham Township, Minerva Township, Pleasant Township, Union Township, White River Township, Bargersville Civil Town, Edinburgh Civil Town, Franklin Civil City, Greenwood Civil City, New Whiteland Civil Town, Princess Lake Civil Town, Trafalgar Civil Town, Whiteland Civil Town, Center Grove Community School Corporation, Clark Pleasant Community School Corporation, Edinburgh Community School Corporation, Franklin Community School Corporation, Greenwood Community School Corporation, Minerva, Hensley, Jackson, United School Corporation, Edinburgh Wright Hagman Public Library, Greenwood Public Library, Johnson County Public Library, Amity Fire District, Bargersville Fire District, Hensley Fire District, Needham Fire District, White River Fire District, Solid Waste District and Johnson County. And my motion would be for these units not to exceed their twenty twenty-three property tax levy multiplied by the twenty twenty-four statewide growth quotient of four percent.
Good job. Do I hear a motion?
That would have been.
Motion by Pam O'Burton, second by John Myers. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
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 All right, just one more thing I wanted, wanted to bring up before we leave. And that's within our package is a summary of Mike Reuters' presentation. And I would strongly suggest everybody read that, uh, page one and two. He gives, and the auditors have given us a great summary of what he stated in there. And among those considerations that Mike addressed both the, uh, both of the Lits, the correctional facility lit and the edit lit and are moving forward. And he, he has agreed with us that we have the, the funds there to begin the community corrections facility underneath the correctional facility lit and also the road projects. And we want to continue to bang on the drum to sit down with bond counsel to be able to get to the bonds for the roads if possible. Enough said.
Yeah, I'd like to bring this up, John, while we're in a public meeting. For those who have not read about what we discussed about the Personnel Advisors Committee, I wanted to point out that the, the members, in addition to the council, are the Johnson County Board of Com, County Commissioners or their representative. the members, in addition to the council, are the Johnson County Board of County Commissioners or their representative, the county auditor or their representative, a member of the County Judiciary, Johnson County Court Administrator, for example, from the judiciary and the Johnson County Sheriff Representative, and then the non-voting Johnson County Attorney represented. And I'd like to, I'll be putting out a formal request for those appointments so we can start scheduling future meetings, obviously with councils, but coming up might be a challenge in the next several weeks, but we'll get started on that. By the way, Amy, what's your predicted date of when we'll receive the budgets? Some idea.
Of this week?
Of this month.
Mm-hmm.
This week.
What's what's today?
Monday.
She originally projected the eighteenth in her email, and I think that's Thursday, isn't it?
Okay, all right. Appreciate it.
Is it Friday?
If any of those if any of those individuals on the ad hoc committee could let me know who their appointment is, I appreciate it.
All right. Moved by John Myers in a second. Nobody want a second?
Second.
Second by John Mallers. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.